Call the town council meeting to order. Please rise for the prayer and pledge the flag. Dear Lord, we submit ourselves to you as your servants and the servants of the people of Hampstead who've placed their trust in us. Please allow every word that is spoken and every action taken to be in the best interest of Hampstead. But, Lord, bless this meeting and our town. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Plant's last meeting. If you will commence with a roll call.
Mayor Evan.
Here.
Ms. Duff.
Here.
Mr. Babylon.
Here.
Mr. Renahan.
Here.
Mr. Kaby.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Minute approvals, we have several. The public hearing from February 11th, the council meeting from February 11th, and the special closed session, executive closed session, from February 19th.
Move to approve them all as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you. Brad, the floor is yours.
We're gonna go all night? Okay, we could do that. Downtown revitalization, we're gonna have a meeting this Friday with Dave Coyne, District 7, to discuss the road transfer limits, water line inspection fee, and transfer of the traffic signals. I'll be here Friday, and Roger and Kevin will be joining me. On your sheet, I revised, the breakout project has started, for those of you who don't know. Currently down, working on West Street, or West Alley, as it used to be called. So you can actually go, it's two-way right now, it's normally a one-way street, but going in from the post office, it's two-way, and coming in from Main Street next to Tom Pride, it's two-way there, so if you use West Alley, be very careful coming out by Tom Pride, because that's only wide enough for one car. There were supposed to be signs put up, that didn't happen, so we'll have some up tomorrow. Snow removal operations, I'm sure everybody realizes we're way over budget. As of the writing of this staff report last week, we were $35,000 over, the budget at $20,000. I had mentioned we had another storm coming last week, and that didn't happen. We dodged a bullet, which was great. The mayor had Cheryl send out a comparison document, what was it, last five or six years? And the last couple of years, we've been under the budgeted amount, so...
2010 was the last bad year where we were even worse off, $85,000 in snow removal costs. That was the double blizzard year.
The Fuchs Project, we met with representatives from Fuchs North America. They submitted a concept plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 26, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna give time to Mr. Kaby during his report, I'm sure he'll give more detail on that regarding planning and zoning. The Hampstead Volunteer Fire Company has approached us in informing us that they want to discuss their current facility and the situation over there. They've concluded that the current facility is no longer adequate, and that they need to start planning some upgrades, which may even include a new building. I did invite them or encourage them to come before the council at some point here soon, to just kinda let the, let the town know what they're thinking. Autozone is still on hold, and they have hired a lobbyist to assist them with the dispute they're having with the state highway regarding the ingress egress. Apparently, State Highway Administrator Melinda Peters, who's the head of State Highway, was unwilling to compromise. There was an attempt to try to work something out with them, and they were unwilling to do that, so it's still on hold. While Joseph A. Bank is in here, I'm sure we all heard the news today that the buyout went through and that they've been purchased by Men's Warehouse. So the Public Works Agreement that we were working out with them to put the new water line is a big question mark at this point, so we'll see what happens, I guess. Well, I'll just kinda monitor it. Water main replacement project, we are still awaiting the revised plans from JMT for the placement of the new water main in accordance with SHA's desire to make some location modifications, and hopefully we'll hear from them soon. The FEMA grant for purchase of emergency generators, the county emergency management department has submitted a draft and hazard mitigation plan to the county commission for approval. This is the document that was holding up the release of the funds, which was $75,000 to purchase emergency generators. Those generators would, the plan was to use them for the pumping stations, so that when we have a power outage, we can keep the water flowing. That mitigation plan, once approved by the county commissioners, will need to come over here to the council, and you will need to adopt that plan. Just a side note at some point, and I know I had spoke to the chief and Roger about maybe doing a small addendum to that, specifically to Hampstead, because we have some things here that are not addressed in that, that plan.
But might be see this plan?
Well, that's a good question. They've had it, the commissioners have had it...
They voted, I saw on TV, they voted on it, I think, last week.
They did, okay. I was not notified. We'll find out tomorrow. Annual budget, Cheryl and I have submitted the first draft of the annual budget, the FY14-15 budget, to the mayor, and he does have that. North Carroll Farms 5, we have signed the milars and expect them back from the county shortly, and we will commence putting together a public works agreement, which will include them. They will be building the pump house for Wells 33 and 34. And then last, North Tower, we look like we, it looks like we have a deal with Verizon. We're trying to finalize the lease agreement with them right now to place 12 antennas on the North Tower. They have the draft agreement back with comments from the mayor and town attorney, so we're just waiting for that to come back. I'd like to take this opportunity, if I may, Mr. Mayor...
Absolutely.
...to thank, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for their support over the last two and a half-plus years. It's been a good experience. It's been very civil and calm and cooperative, and I can tell you, the places I've worked before, it always wasn't that way. Very professional, and I think, I think a lot got done, and there's a lot still to be done. I wanted to thank, I also wanna thank the residents, in particular the merchants in town, who have been extremely cooperative. Everybody's worked together for the, for the betterment of the town. The residents generally have been cooperative and easy to get along with. There's always those few that can be a little difficult, but nothing, nothing too bad. And I think most importantly, Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank the employees. We have a great team here. It's run like a well-oiled machine. Roger and Kevin, you guys don't get, your guys don't get the credit they deserve, and I've been out there, and I've seen what you go through, and, and I want you to know I appreciate everything you've done. Police Department, aces, absolute aces. And finally, I wanna publicly thank Lorena, Cheryl, and Christie. Outstanding, and they're gonna take care of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. All right. I guess we should do this, we should do this part of it now. Somebody brought a camera, right? All right. Corporal?
Mr. Plant.
Whereas Bradley Plant has served with distinction as our town manager from August of 2011 to March 2014, whereas Bradley Plant consistently brought intelligence, sound judgment, fair and balanced advice, and that New England sense of humor to town hall, whereas Bradley Plant selflessly dedicated his time and energy to the town, whereas Bradley Plant helped improve the quality of life in the town through his management of the town and his personal professional relationships with members of the community and your personal relationships. Now therefore, I, Christopher Brennan, Mayor of the Town of Hampstead, do hereby wish our friend Brad all the best in his future endeavors, and hereby proclaim today, March 11, 2014, as Bradley Plant Day in the Town of Hampstead. Thank you, Brad.
So now we're off to oversight. Madam Counsel. What?
Can he come up now?
No, yeah, no, 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 no. You're hanging out until the end of the day going meeting, buddy.
Nice try.
Marlene, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Nice try.
Farmers Market Report. Our 2014 vendor application forms are now available on the, excuse me, on the market's website, thanks to Jason, and on the Helpful Links tab on the town's website, thanks to Lorena. And I actually was able to find them, so that's a nice website, the way that's been redesigned, if I can find something, so she did a nice job. We're still contacting potential vendors for the summer, and we, I think we've already lined up about three new ones, so we're excited about that. Seven vendors have signed up for Sharon's marketing workshop, which we're having here on March the 27th, and I hope she's not preaching to the choir, because we're trying to do this to help our vendors have better customer service, and not just sit there with their phones in their hands. And the ones who could use some help haven't signed up yet, so we're gonna try and urge them to do so. Our next advisory team meeting will be Monday, April the 7th. We canceled it because of the, the March meeting because of the snow. I was unable to attend yesterday's prevention leadership team meeting at the Health Department in Westminster yesterday because of a prior commitment. They won't be meeting again until June, so that's good. Excuse me. And I do plan to attend the Human Services Program's joint meeting of the Board of Directors and their Strategic Planning Committee on March the 28th. And lastly, Sharon and I both wanna thank Brad and Carolyn for their support.
Thank you. Wayne?
The Hampstead train station raffled off a TV set at the Hampstead Business Association's Community Expo. The TV set was donated by Open Automation Design, and they made $821 on it.
Good.
Not a bad deal, for just selling tickets for a week. The next big thing I've got to do is go to...
What was of the TV?
Yeah, Robin Nesbitt. Yeah. Local real estate agent wanted. Next big thing we have is I'm gonna try to get the, we tried to get a ramp and a deck approved for, over by the caboose, and it didn't go well last summer, so I've revised the plan. I'm gonna go over to the county and see if I can get it approved, hopefully this week coming up, so hopefully that'll happen. Hampstead Business Association, as I mentioned, they had their, their Community Expo. We had 30 vendors, we had a late start this year. We put it together in 25 days, we had 30 vendors. Attendance was, was down a little bit. I think it may have been because it was the first nice day in two months, and maybe people were still looking for their cars in their backyards and didn't come out, but I think everybody had a good time. Food was good, and I think everybody's pretty much happy with the turnout, I only had one complaint, so...
Good.
That's all I have.
Thank you for your efforts, and that was well done. Thank you. Jason?
The Planning and Zoning Commission met on February 26. We approved the minutes for January 29. Brad touched on the Main Street revitalization update. The breakout project obviously has not began yet, but hopefully will soon. Fuchs North America was in to introduce the concept plan. Couple notes, the traffic study that they have planned should be completed the first week of March, I don't know if they've done that yet.
We met with them last night. The traffic study?
Yes. Okay, so that has been completed. Comments were heard from Linda Eisenberg from the county concerning a number of options about updating the master plan with respect to Panther Drive and how that should be handled, given the changes in the topography of the land since the master plan was created. There was also some discussion about parking requirements as far as what's required for in-town versus what is needed in that type of building, so that, there may be additional comments and discussion on that. And the public hearing for the concept plan is scheduled for March 28. There was no update from, county update from Bobby Moser, and the next meeting will be here at, I think, 7 o'clock, public hearing on March 26 for Fuchs' concept plan, and then the commission meeting directly following that. That is all.
Do you plan to vote on the concept plan that night?
I believe so.
We'll put out a, I think, a press release in Northern News to let them know that that's coming up.
Yeah, it'll be posted, the site will be posted tomorrow. I think that's getting posted tomorrow for the public hearing, the Fuchs, the Fuchs Project. Well, if you don't know, you will be posting it tomorrow. Oh, you did it today? Okay, great.
All right.
Yep.
Tim?
As far as parks go, the parks are probably finally almost free of snow, so that's good. Told that the Public Works Department is going to be readying them for spring imminently. And in one note, I was contacted by a local resident who had an interesting plan for, and Marlene, thank you for turning him on to me, I appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome.
He had an interesting plan for looking at some outdoor fitness-type equipment to coincide with some of the walking paths we have at the park over off of Dakota Road, and I did wanna take a look at his stuff further, and hopefully have a report for you guys for the next meeting, and see if there's something that's at all feasible for us. I know there's also insurance concerns there, too, so we have to look into that as well.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Joe?
February 2014 average water usage was 390,000 gallons per day. March 2014 usage is 400,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total for February is 4.52 inches. The rainfall so far this month is .30. We're working on reading the first quarter water meters and the first quarter water sampling for MDE monitoring requirements collected and delivered to Enviro Chem Lab. That's all I got.
All right, thanks. Corporal Schwartz, you will be giving the police report today. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too, sir. HPD officers issued 82 citations and warnings throughout February, whether it paid a big part in our traffic enforcement, just because it was so poor. Side roads were kinda locked up with snow and stuff like that. There was nine crashes reported, two occurred at Hampstead bypass around 42, which is no surprise to anybody who's ever driven through there. There was no other road that had more than one collision reported. The agency did receive a $2,500 grant for distracted driving to the Maryland State Highway Safety Office, being April, it's a big push to stop cellphone uses, but being on the cellphone, texting while driving, that kind of thing. Thirty agencies throughout the state were issued funds from State Highway in order to do that. Serious crime of the month of February, there was three thefts reported, one attempted burglary. The thefts were all petty thefts, one wallet was stolen from the employee locker at McDonald's, one trash tote, and one TV taken from a residence, probably by a friend of the victim who had gone out of town for a while. The McDonald theft, and a TV is still being investigated. The attempted burglary was on ready court, which resulted in a drug suspect being arrested. Community policing for the month of February, police officers conducted 127 patrol checks of businesses, schools, and other locations. The school checks, the officers are actually in the schools, talking to students and staff. It's taken this long now that the kids are excited to see the police, elementary school, middle school, and so they're happy to see us, and they're no longer asking why are the police in the schools. Sergeant Gegler attended the staff meeting for the Maryland Police Correctional Train Academy, that kinda went over the content of what the police academy would be like for the next six months. There's a new academy instructor and director, and they've got a new plan together, so it's gonna be a really good academy for our guy down there. Sergeant Gegler also installed one child safety seat for her town resident, and she attended a health department installation that installed 10 car seats for county residents. Captain and PFC Thorne attended the Hampstead Business Expo for part of the day on Saturday. I gave an active shooter presentation to Charlotte Middle School, very well received, kinda gave them an overview of what they would deal with in those types of scenarios. Other schools have actually requested that presentation as well, so it kinda gives them an idea of what to deal with, how to deal with it, as well as not just in a school facility, but in the everyday life. Captain and I and Sergeant Gegler also attended a lockdown drill at Hampstead Lentry, along with Carroll County Sheriff's Office. Canine activity, PFC Holtzman and Canine Nego conducted five scans and searches during the month of February, two for Hampstead Police, two for the Maryland State Police, and one for Westminster City. The scans resulted in one arrest, there was trace marijuana found in three of the other vehicles, and all drivers and passengers actually admitted to some sort of drug use during an exit interview on the southern road, so... Staffing currently, PFC Holtzman did not get the position with Haverd County, and will be remaining with us in his current position as a Canine Officer. Recruit Wingcrick and P-Tex entered the Police Training Commission Correctional Academy on March 4th, a day late due to snow. Unfortunately, recruit P-Tex resigned from the academy and the agency dismissed hours upon entering the academy. At that point, we were over the authorized staffing of 10, we're now back to nine, which is the authorized limit. I'm the liaison with the Police Training Commission, like I said, the guys that are down there are really good instructors. I've known them for years, it's gonna be a really good academy. It's kinda neat in the fact that we have somebody in there, as well as the Sheriff's Office has five, and Westminster City has two, so it's a Carroll County Academy, really good for those guys to get that training, guys and girls. Just a reminder that the Hampstead Police Advisory Council meeting will be on Wednesday, May 21st, at 7:00 PM here at town hall. Encourage everybody to stop in, spend some time, learn something about us, and some of the others, something else.
Questions for Corporal Schwartz? All right. Thank you, sir. Mayor's comments, I guess I had a few. It's been an eventful day as far as news in Hampstead, starting when I was sitting at lunch, and I get a call about the Joe Banks Men's Warehouse deal. And just, I had a couple of thoughts about it, since I got phone calls from Rachel at the Carroll County Times, and Baltimore Sun, and Fox News, and I think Haven got a call from B-A-L. But, you know, I think, basically, I think it's too early to determine what impact the Men's Warehouse acquisition's gonna have on Joe Banks, and what it will have on the employment base of our town. It's typical, though, for the acquired company to typically lose some personnel. Duplicate roles in executive and staff office areas usually get cut back. I was, I mean, I've known this, but I checked in with the county Economic Development Group, the Banks employees, 575 people in Carroll County, the bulk of which are here in Hampstead. There's two, two facilities, obviously the one here in Hampstead, and then they also have the old London Flog Plant down there in Eldersburg, so they have quite a presence here in Carroll County. We certainly feel for the local employees who are thinking, you know, have to be thinking what impact this acquisition will have on them and their future, and how it'll affect them personally. I've been through three acquisitions myself in the banking landscape, and I can tell you, they're unsettling as can be initially, but, you know, hopefully in the long run, it opens new opportunities for all the employees. I checked out Men's Warehouse on the web a little bit, just to see what our new corporate neighbor has in store. Their main distribution center, which is quite large, is down in Houston. Obviously, very automated, you can go on the web and see it. That's, I guess, good news in the fact that it's two-thirds of the way across the country. They also have a Tux rental distribution facility in Richmond, other smaller centers appear to be in California and Illinois. Hopefully, that bodes well, because they don't have anything in Baltimore, or in the median area, New Jersey, or Delaware. But we'll have to obviously wait and see what their plans are and hope for the best. I know the bank CFO, I've met with him a few times, I called him, left, obviously I didn't expect that he might be able to take my call today, but I, hopefully he'll get back to me here in the next week or so, and I'll see if there's any information he can share that's outside the press release, or if a meeting with Men's Warehouse Management can be arranged at some future point in time, so just to be clued in on what their plans are. As for us, as for Hampstead, I think we're recognized as a business-friendly town, and will continue to prosper, in part through the strong education background and work ethic of our employment base. We were once considered a company town in Black and Decker. Certainly employed a lot more people than 675. I think they employed upwards of 2,000 people. Yet, you know, over the years, they departed, and we continued to grow and prosper, I would think that that would continue here in Hampstead, independent of what happens with the bank's operation. I can also, you know, point to the fact that the recent announcement of Fuchs relocating here is a prime example, I think, of our town and county working together to attract business, and being viewed as business-friendly, with that successful business relocating here and making a very significant investment. So I think there's still good things in store for Hampstead related to employment base. To the extent we learn anything more about Men's Warehouse, and that it's not already out there in the, in the public domain, we'll be sure to pass on the information as soon as we can. So that's the comment on, on Joe Banks. Another comment was that the county does something basically with, puts out a Carroll County downtown pamphlet, shop locally, and we're on the inside front cover, top left, so we've got a quintessential small town, and about a three-sentence blurb about Hampstead, to the extent somebody stops by or sees these in a rack, they pull it out, one of the first things they're gonna see is our town. So I think that's, that's positive, always looking for a way to publicize us a little bit. Last comment, I have to read this, because we had a closed session between the last council meeting and, and this one, with a couple of things going on, one of which was that, and the other is, was a legal matter. But after posting and scheduling closed session pursuant to the authority in the state government article, section 10-508A, the mayor and council met on February 19th at town hall to discuss personnel and legal matters. Present during the meetings were myself, council people Babylon, Kaby, Duff, Renahan, and Thomas. Also present was Chief Meekins. After the discussion, no votes were taken, and the meeting was then adjourned. So I think you'll see some of the fruits of those conversations here in a minute. So unfinished business? All right. Appointment of an interim town manager. With Brad's departure, we did a little thinking, and we're, we're grateful that we have a deep bench, and we're also grateful that somebody's decided that he will step up and assume the position of interim town manager, so we will not be putting out a town manager position for advertisement or filling it, because we're, we're gonna see how it works from filling it with, from inside the company, so to speak. And the person I'm putting forward for nomination is Kevin Han, for those who did not already know, because I think Kevin's been out in the community, talking to a fair number of people, and receiving a lot of feedback that's positive, whether out in the business community or, or here. I can tell you that Kevin's the assistant superintendent of our Public Works Department, but he's worked for us for over 20 years, and been a real asset for our town. So I think that, and Kevin stepping up and agreeing to serve as the town manager is a positive thing. Chief Meekins has also agreed to step up and serve as Kevin's mentor in this transitional phase related to leadership development. For those who don't know, Kevin's homegrown, you know, born, raised, graduated from North Carroll High School, still lives right down here on Sunset Drive. So what we get with that is somebody who knows the lay of the land, he knows the business people, he knows, he knows the folks over at the county, obviously knows the folks here in, in town very well. He's familiar with all the issues, he's been around since the bypass days, therefore he knows all the folks at the state level and state highway administration. I think his strengths related to our water system and his knowledge of the local landscape will play, come in handy related to our two biggest projects, which are the relocation of, redo of the water main on Main Street, and then the revitalization of Main Street. So we appreciate that Kevin's stepping up to do this, so I need a motion to appoint Kevin as the interim town manager.
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Kevin Han as interim town manager.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? See, I told you it was gonna be unanimous.
You're trouble now, boy. I, Kevin Han, do swear or affirm...
I, Kevin Han, do swear and affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
To the state of Maryland...
To the state of Maryland...
And support the Constitution and laws thereof...
And support the Constitution and laws thereof...
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment...
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment...
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully...
Without partiality or prejudice...
Without partiality or prejudice...
Execute the office of interim town manager and zoning administrator of the Town of Hampstead...
Execute the office of interim town manager and zoning administrator of the Town of Hampstead...
According to the Constitution and laws of the state...
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mentor, mentor.
Those are colorful. Look at them. Two more. Can I not shake you? You're good.
I'm good.
Congrats, Kevin.
Thank you all.
Too late now, you can't run.
And you have to, and you have to write a book.
One more you gotta do.
If you're town manager.
Yeah, first assignment.
There we go. Take one. That's for you.
Suitable for framing.
Thank you. I'd like to be sitting in that chair. Thank you all for your faith in me, and I hope to do you a good job and keep the projects that are... Thank you all for your faith in me, and I hope to do a good job and keep the projects that are important to this town and to the people that live in this town moving in the right direction. Thank you for your support. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Approval of transfer of police capital funds. You have any, you have anything to say to that?
We're looking, since we obviously didn't need to buy a car this year, since we were kind of low on personnel equipment, what we're looking to do is take this opportunity to upgrade our computers and switch the capital money from buying the car to at least $15,000 of it to switch over to computers, which will actually cover the computers, the contractual services for getting them where they need to be, buy a couple four licenses, and that's, it covers the installation, it covers the amounts and the ours and all that stuff that we were looking for is to be able to move within the police budget money to, from what purpose to.
Really require? It's, because it's a police car and it's capital budget, and we're not buying a specific item, I thought it was best that we approve it. So. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Other new business. Introduction of ordinance 504, an ordinance to add chapter 70 to the town code regarding prohibited substances. Would you like to give a Reader's Digest version?
Sure. Reader's Digest version is that we're looking to add an ordinance similar to, actually it's an adaptation of Manchester ordinance, which was the adaptation of the city ordinance, to kind of get the message out there that this is not the type of business activity that we'd like to see in this town. And, you know, at this point, I don't see it as an overwhelming issue. The only vendor that I know of is just outside of town, which will remain managed for now. And we just didn't want that kind of thing creeping into our town and sending a message from the mayor and council, showing the police department that it's not the kind of business we're looking for.
Motion to introduce ordinance 504?
I make a motion to introduce ordinance 504, an ordinance to add chapter 70 to the Hampstead Town Code regarding prohibited substances.
I second, but I did want to add one little addendum to it, if possible. I guess it would be another article. This is sort of splitting hairs, but there is one thing that I wanted to put in here, and it would fall under some sort of exclusion. That exclusion being anybody who is currently enrolled Hopkins, and there's also available by prescription from some of the hospitals in Maryland, a substance called Marinol, and I want to make sure that that wouldn't fall underneath this. So I was thinking maybe we could put an article exclusion in here, just listing that anybody who has prescription or is involved in a medical trial, that wouldn't fall under this ordinance.
Can't make amendments on introduction, but we can.
We can do it.
We can do it.
The night of. Comment?
No, I have no objection. I think we were trying to break.
If you got some info on that that you could send around to everybody, it'd be appreciated.
Absolutely.
All right.
Other discussion. The, some of the language in here about paraphernalia would prohibit CVS and Hampstead Pharmacy from being able to sell syringes for legitimate drug purposes. Also, I'm not a chemist, and I do.
Neither am I.
And I do know that they do some compounding down here at Hampstead Family Pharmacy. And so I think we need to add an exclusion in here for people who are licensed. So I think as part of this exclusion, like those would be legitimate prescriptions, but also people that, well, people that are licensed to sell those products, because it may not be a pharmacist, you know. Some other store could be selling syringes, as long as they're doing it legally. So I think some kind of exclusion. I'll try to come up with something and pass it off to our fine attorneys to review.
All right. I think we need a vote on the motion to introduce. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Public comment, we'll be going into a, before we get to take public comment, we'll be going into a closed session after public comment to discuss legal and personnel issues, one of which relates to your offer from last year, from last month, just so you know.
Okay. Are there any questions? We're here tonight.
Okay. I don't think there are any yet. Other public comments? Go on once. Yes, sir, Doug. Nice to see you.
I have been offending a whole lot too with my daughter's athletic events, but I want to thank the manager's plan for the work he's did here. Sorry I always kind of bothered as much as I should, but wish you the best and good luck with your mom and other problems you have. I, too, would like to say thanks to the maintenance department. They do things that the normal person doesn't see. They found out I had a water leak in one of my properties, a two-unit property, and we used 375,000 gallons in a month. So they called me and says, hey, you got a problem. So they met me down there, and first thing you know, we had it resolved, thanks to their thinking on what could happen. So that's been taken care of also, and that's a way of saving water. Also, in the longer term, we had water going through two meters, but yet charged twice as should have been once. And they found that problem. So they do more than just out here working on the streets or whatever. We thank them for that. I'm real happy to see the cooperation between the council and the manager and the mayor. It's terrific to sit back here and kind of relax and listen and see what's going on, because I've been in certain areas of meetings that you could cut the air with a knife, and we appreciate that as, as residents and fans out here. And the last thing is, I second this police department expertise and the great job that they do throughout the town and the area.
Thank you for the comments, Doug. I guess I was remiss, but Roger, Kevin, and the boys have done a great job with all the snow removal this year, proactively bringing in contractors, front-end loaders, very few, mostly all positives, a couple of disgruntled people that you always have because they dumped the snow someplace they shouldn't have. But they even went out, when they got those comments, to look and see where the snow got dumped, because it wasn't them and the normal crew necessarily dumping it, and on occasion they were like, oh, we messed up and actually moved it and put it someplace else. So, well done, you know, and the, you know, Brad, you've led a good team for two and a half years, and Kevin and Ken will make sure that continues. So, any other comments? All right. I'll take a motion to go into closed session under 10-508A, and, let's see, you want to join us, Brad, or not? You should join us.
I'll stick around.
And Kevin Han and Ken Meekins are also going to be in on that meeting, as well as our attorneys.
So move. Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you all for coming.